Good evening, President Oshinsky, School Board Superintendent Dr. McLaughlin and the greater SLUSD community that has been watching, watching, listening and speaking tonight. My name is Sonal Patel. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services and I am here tonight alongside my Assistant Superintendent colleagues, Dr. Collins and Dr. Sunny Patin to present our recommendations for reopening SLUSD this fall for the 2020-2021 school year along with some more details. As we consider reopening school, SLUSD leadership has been working alongside the community since our March 13 shelter in place and physical school closure to ensure that when we reopen this fall, we do so safely. Throughout this process, our work has been guided by our value for responsive and engaging teaching and learning in whichever format we need to conduct this in. For a safe and supportive and inclusive school community, whether it's in person or online, keeping in mind those students and families that are most likely to be marginalized in schools and timely two-way communication and partnerships by working with folks along the way and engaging in multi-stepped stakeholder engagement. During our work this late spring in task force workgroups, county and statewide meetings, there was definitely no break. SLUSD has adhered to these considerations. First, we know we must follow our public health guidelines, namely the ones from Alameda County Public Health and then those that also come from the greater state. Secondly, this means that we have to have coherence and consistency in all parts of our operational work in order to keep students and staff safe. We have to make sure that not only do we follow the guidelines, but that we set up all the protocols for hygiene and safety that ensure that when folks are working in our organization, they will be safe. And along the way, as we're doing this, we have to continue to monitor increases in local health conditions. This means that we are continually assessing and reassessing how COVID-19 is affecting our community. Throughout our planning to date, we have known that the first day of school, as this first day of school drew closer, that the most updated feedback about our community's current preference for reopening would be critical. We know that it's not really a vote, right? Because there's so many other considerations to take in place, but we always want to know where our folks are and what they're currently thinking so that we know what we're going to need to address in whatever format we are needing to reopen in for safety. We sent a survey last Thursday, receiving over 2,500 family surveys and 350 staff surveys from all our bargaining groups, including SLTA, CSCA, Teamster Trades and our management group. To orient you, we surveyed about the blended learning model and the distance learning model. The blended learning model meaning students come in smaller cohorts, stable cohorts, a few times a week. To orient you, the dark blue represents the number of respondents that like the modality of instruction and the gray indicates those who do not like this model. The first graph shows the results of blended in-person instruction and these are the results for the distance online model. As you can see, staff and family voice are telling us two things. Number one, there is significant hope that we can get to a blended learning model with some degree of in-person instruction sooner or later, and people do like that model. Two, both of these stakeholder groups prefer a distant learning start to the school year, which is less than a month away. After much discussion and as President Oshinsky indicated, with a clear priority for the health and safety of our community, we believe we need to use a distance learning model to start the 2020-2021 school year. And yes, we know this is not great news for lots of our students and families and our staff that want to come back and be in person with our students, even if it's just a few students at a time, a few times a week. But please remember, since the initial closure on March 13th, the district leadership has been very clear that schools would not reopen to in-person instruction unless it was safe to do so. And given the current local conditions, it does not appear that we are there yet. So you might be wondering, when will SLUSD be able to open for in-person instruction? At least for some students? Let me explain the steps to returning to in-person learning. Starting with the blended model where students come a few times a week in stable cohorts and we identify maybe students who are most in need of this instruction. It starts with our local and state public health orders as well as our local conditions indicating that we are safe to return. We are not at that point yet, but that is the first step in us being able to consider this option. Please know that while we are waiting for this indication, we are not still. We are active. We are taking several steps to prepare and to be ready for when local conditions allow for an in-person return. We are working on building our capacity to implement safety and hygiene protocols. We'll give you more information about that in a bit. And we will continue to work in partnership and solidarity on impacts on working conditions with our bargaining units, our unions for an in-person return. Along the way, we are going to, while we are in distance learning, monitor student and family needs and progress, how often they show up, tiered intervention to ensure that we are deploying personnel and resources to capture presence and engagement along the way, but also to determine which groups may need to come back first as soon as conditions allow. With that in mind, we know that we need to start with a distance model. So the state, sorry, we have heard, sorry, one second, please. Thank you. We know that we need to start with a distance learning model. Knowing that recommendation that we are giving you, we want to give you a brief overview of the model so that you can distinguish it from the model that was in late spring, which was called emergency distance learning. We've learned so much since then and even from our virtual summer school, which is serving over 1,500 students. There have been ups and downs even in this summer model and all of that we're taking as learning to improve how we start the fall. Here are some key features for how we believe we need to start the fall. First, attendance will be required. This is a mandate from the state and we will need to have tracking systems to ensure that students are engaging in daily live instruction and that we are taking steps to intervene when they are not. We will be using a learning management system, CSO for TK5 and Schoology, which is up for board approval tonight for grades six through 12, so that parents have a place to go to see what is expected for the day and we can have a universal hub for uploading and monitoring assignments and grading and that we can also see what amount of time students are spending in online activities. We are going to need and have consistent daily schedules that families can rely on as they are themselves managing multiple students and jobs, jobs. And we know that daily socio-emotional learning needs to be a key part of the live instruction that happens when students and teachers interface. I'm about to share some of the details about the distance model that we are proposing as an SLUSD team and please keep in mind that they are pending negotiations. The state has provided guidelines for minimum instructional time, minimal instructional minutes and the educational code also states that schools should offer the most amount of in-person instruction as possible. Knowing that we cannot offer in-person instruction due to our local health conditions, we take that to mean that we need to provide the most amount of interaction possible and that that interaction should value socio-emotional learning and English language development. Please note the acronyms that you'll see in the other parts of the slide that are coming up. We know that our students were adversely affected by the spring emergency distance learning and that coupled with the summer slide that often occurs even despite our summer school attempts, we need to maximize engaging face-to-face interaction and support this fall. Students and families have been repeatedly telling us how much the face-to-face time even in Zoom is the highlight of the day and keeps them focused. Even though we know too much screen time is not good, time interfacing with your teacher, someone who cares about you and knows your needs, needs to be prioritized. We would rather families limit time on phones, social media, watching TV, streaming online content or playing video games instead of limiting Zoom time with their teacher. With that in mind, here are SLUSD proposals for how we offer synchronous, that is being online at the same time for students this fall by grade bands. Please note that these proposals are pending negotiations with our union. For grades TK to K, we believe that students will need a morning check-in, some sort of socio-emotional learning hook to the day, even if it's 15 minutes, a song, something to get them activated. As someone who taught kindergarten for over a dozen years, I know that there is nothing more exciting than seeing your teacher first thing in the morning to give you a sense of purpose for the day. Next, there needs to be 30 minutes or so of some kind of guided instruction, whether it be on English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies or in a project-based format. However, the teacher is organizing the curriculum. There could be a break, there could likely be a break between the morning check-in and instruction and then after maybe some time on asynchronous, on your own learning, students come back in for some live support. Maybe there's a read aloud or an activity that involves the arts or movement and that there would be a closing socio-emotional learning checkout to the day. Students who are English learners, as our D-LAC president, Mr. Munoz-Munoz, mentioned, need to ensure that they have quality and consistent access to English language developed time. So on top of this time, students who are English language learners would also receive ELD. For grades TK to K, that is the proposal. For grades one through five, we're looking at a similar format of a morning check-in, time working alone, setting up one part of instruction for 30 minutes, time working alone, setting up a second part of instruction, maybe ELA versus math, highly hopefully integrated with science and social studies and then having perhaps a read aloud or some sort of sharing activity because we know students benefit from seeing each other and talking peer-to-peer and then a closing SCL, socio-emotional learning moment or checkout meeting as a group. That would be with the classroom teacher in addition to ELD minutes for students who are English language learners and qualify for ELD. And then separately, we know that our art, music and PE specialists are very eager to participate in providing instruction and connecting with our students in the valuable coursework that they do so that students could also receive as part of their minutes, time with those specialists. For grades six to 12, what we are looking at is that within each period, there is half the time for live instruction, whether it's a guided, very directed piece of instruction, whether it's an SCL check-in or the teacher putting the student in breakout groups, which you can do on Zoom to work and the teacher popping into different breakouts to provide tutoring. And at the other half of the period, time would be for independent work offline. These are our proposals. You can see that students really can't do it alone at home. They need lots of structure, lots of check-ins throughout the day. And clearly, the public comment from folks that are coming in who called in today show a need for more student interface with teachers. And with so many of our, there's a concern for that some students who need more resources will need more support. And it's important to know that we are largely Title I district with over 50%, well over 50% to 60% of our students receiving free and reduced lunch. And a third of our students as English learners, we believe that more resources in a distance learning format in addition to materials being sent home means more contact and more time. A caller mentioned the three-by-three schedule. We are looking if we start with distance model using the existing six to 12 schedules. There was a question about ROP and we're awaiting the ROP program's decision. It should be coming in the coming weeks. So just to kind of follow up on some of the questions that came up during public comment. Another part of our proposal that is pending negotiations is we've heard very clearly from the community that they want time to prepare and train properly for distance learning and to include our families in that preparation and training and that they also want materials to be distributed to students so that they have what they need at home, whether it's scissors or Play-Doh or WikiSticks or crayons or whatever they need in order to be able to engage in the instruction. So with that in mind, one of our proposals is to change the school calendar to move the student start date from August 12 to August 17 as that would give us three more days in the beginning of the school year to prepare staff, to allow them to attend trainings that they deem necessary to prepare for distance learning, to collaborate, prepare materials, an opportunity to onboard parents, have them come up, pick up the supplies they need in order to do distance learning at home and also to set up the support groups and trainings that we know will be necessary as our parents Suwa and Brian Stewart mentioned when they called in. And our TK teacher, Ms. Felsinger, mentioned we do believe and we are preparing to ensure that there are materials that will be sent home. In addition to the three days that we would ask for to start a little bit later, we're looking at the first three days of school, their student days to be minimum days to give teachers a little bit of extra preparation time and to do the trainings that they think might be necessary to prepare materials and even perhaps connect with students on their own terms in order to start the year well. So again, staff training, preparation, distribution of student materials, parent training and support groups. Thank you, our caller, parent, Genji Histon, who mentioned the need for parent support groups. We couldn't agree more. Our next steps in SLUSD reopening are to finalize our distance learning negotiations and we look forward to doing that. And we also know that this will help us move into training and supporting on the distance learning model, the distribution of materials and the training and for staff and support that we mentioned. And that there is a new requirement, per Senate Bill 98, a state requirement that in lieu of the LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plan, which was supposed to happen this past spring and then was pushed to this December, instead, that LCAP requirement is no longer and there is a new requirement. It's called the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. You'll notice it has the same initials like LCAP, but it's actually called the LCP. And we intend to, we are working on writing that right now. We will intend to share that plan with parent groups and to have it go to public hearing in August and for board approval in September. Many of the features of that plan will be worked out as we necessarily are in negotiations with our various union groups and so we'll be able to get their input in that format as well. Please know that SLUSD will provide updates about the distribution of needed materials to start the school year and other important topics via our website and ParentSquare after completing this process. For now, let us share what each division in SLUSD has been working on to prepare for the fall opening. First, Dr. Kevin Collins, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, will share what his team has been up to. Dr. Collins?
Thank you, Dr. Patel. I want to quickly update the board regarding what the business and operations has been up to and is planning in terms of supporting distance learning as we get close to opening of the school year. And if you could push the first box here, Dr. Patel. In the business department, what we're specifically looking at right now is receiving materials that are coming from the California State Office of Emergency Services, where part of the governor's budget this year was not financial supportive districts, but it was supportive districts in terms of procurement of personal protective equipment. So there's been a calculation made of trying to support districts for PPE needs for the first couple of months of school. And whether we have, whether or not we have students in here for the first day, we know that we're going to have PPE needs because we are going to have staff on our campuses. So things like hand sanitizer, masks, face shields and thermometers are all being provided by the Office of Emergency Services and have started to arrive this week. And as those items are, can be difficult for districts at the district level to acquire, it is very nice to have the state supporting us in those efforts. We also have the ESER and LLM funds. ESER is the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Funds that we knew about as of last year and also the Learning Loss Mitigation Funds, the federal funds coming into the district. Those funds are being budgeted to support additional PPE needs as well as distance needs. And then some of the things that Dr. Patel discussed in her presentation, we're looking at things like textbooks which have an online component, which would support distance learning. We're looking at how would we provide materials and manipulatives for younger students who would need to have those items at home that they would normally be available in a classroom. We're looking at how to purchase hotspots to support students and families that don't have regular access to the internet and also what are our additional tech needs in terms of Chromebooks or teacher equipment and whatnot to support distance learning. So all of that is going on within the business department. With food service, you know that we have been serving food since the first Monday after school was released in March, since March 16th. We will, we're coming close to 700,000 meals served to the San Leandro community and that's something that we're certainly proud of. Currently, we are providing three times per week meal distribution, which is seven days of meals through August 7th. After that, we're going to transition into the new plan, which would be supporting the regular school year in distance mode. We'll plan on with in supportive distance learning mode distributing breakfast and lunch at multiple sites, where we are going to be looking for what the state has in terms of federal waivers that are coming up that would allow us to continue to serve multiple days or not have students present or potentially dinner as well. And if those waivers do come through, we would certainly like to continue with the larger meal service that we've been offering. However, at least what we can guarantee right now is breakfast and lunch will be served during distance learning mode. Next slide, please. In terms of custodial services, we're looking at additional training for safety as well as use of equipment and use of disinfectants to both safely and effectively clean our facilities. We have purchased ionizers for all schools so that custodians can quickly and efficiently spray disinfectants in the classrooms during off times when nobody else is around that would quickly disinfect and reach hard to clean areas within classrooms and offices. And we're also reviewing schedules and allocations, custodial allocations at sites to make sure that we're scheduling people to be as efficient as possible as we're asking custodians to do more. We want to make sure that their schedules are doable. We're looking at FTE allocations at all of the sites in order again, making sure that all of the equipment and the personal protective equipment that custodians have is appropriate for them to safely and efficiently do their jobs. And finally, in the maintenance department, we're installing hand sanitizer dispensers in all of our classrooms and offices. That's something that we've had on order for a couple of months now and we're finally getting those dispensers in. So we'll have new hand dispensers in every space. We're also in the process of checking all of our HVAC units to ensure the proper functioning and filtration and airflow through those units. And that's it for business and operations. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Sunny Patin, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Let me go ahead and start with our family and student support services. So our after-school education and safety program, otherwise known as ACES, will be operating virtually during distance learning. So in our partnership with our provider, Boys and Girls Club, they, their staff and our students will have access to all of the platforms, the learning platforms that the students have access to during the day. So we will be outreach-ing out to families to let them know what the process is going to look like in terms of how to access the after-school program, the virtual after-school program that will be provided for them. Also, we will continue our family outreach to our most vulnerable populations. That include our McKinney-Vento families, immigrant families and foster youth as we are continuing to identify students and families that may need extra support with supplies to engage most effectively during distance learning. You know, this may also include monitoring these students' engagement to make sure that they are attending to distance learning and identifying those who are not and also getting them some one-on-one attention to the support of our McKinney-Vento Foster Youth District Liaison that will connect with them. We also are going to offer a multilingual hotline where staff will be able to assist families who call in with connecting them to learning resources and support with parent education on the learning platform, some of which may be new throughout the duration of the distance learning. For personnel services, we are going to ensure that our employees really understand their rights that are outlined in the Families First Coronavirus Response Act so that in this act to support them, so should they find that they need to take a leave as a result of some COVID-related reason. You know, this act provides employees with paid sick leave and expanded family or medical leave for specific reasons that may be related to COVID-19. We are also wanting to ensure that we have trained substitutes for anyone who may be on a long-term leave. We want to be sure that any substitute who is in the classroom during distance learning is familiar and trained with the latest learning platforms and that they are very clear on the expectations that we have set. Additionally, we are going to make sure that all of, we're going to take advantage really of this time during distance learning to train our staff on any new protocols to protect them against COVID-19 once they return to in-person teaching. So that means training on PPE usage and just the new safety protocols to prevent COVID-19. Additionally, for our enrollment center, just want to reassure families out there that students will be continued, you know, we will continue to enroll students into their resident school in a class that is consistent with the prior class size limits that have been set in our collective bargaining agreement. So there is no change there. We also will continue to offer online and in-person enrollment appointments for families who may need additional assistance with enrolling their students for this coming year. We actually have an upcoming enrollment fair that's by appointment only on Thursday this week. And finally, in employee engagement, we will, we will continue to implement our employee wellness policy in collaboration with our bargaining units to really attend to our employees' socio-emotional needs. We can offer participation currently in our Care Solus online 24-hour concierge service that supports mental health needs in addition to our Employee Assistance Program, also known as EAP, that can connect employees with counseling service free of charge to them. And finally, you know, we want to make sure that we are keeping our families and staff updated with the most current information about the current learning model that we are in and any other models that we may have to transition to in and out of so that we are planned, so that they can plan accordingly. So we'll offer effective, timely, two-way communication to make sure that they are abreast of all the things that are coming their way. And that concludes my report and I will toss back to Dr. Patel.
Thank you, Dr. Sunny Patin. Our Educational Service Division has also been preparing over the summer for the fall start and working with staff in order to be ready. Starting with our prevention and intervention team, they have been working to make sure that the increased mental health services that have been part of every Local Control Accountability Plan and all the grants that we've procured, that that increase in mental health services that San Leandro Unified School District, thank you, Board, has added every year are available to students even in the distance learning model. So there's lots of contract work going on right now, making sure that they'll be ready to serve our students. The team has also been attending training and collecting resources in order to ensure support for staff as they embed socio-emotional and trauma-informed practices into their daily teaching. We have many grants that schools like Garfield and Muir and were part of, but now it's time to make sure that that work hits all of our TK12 students in a way that feels natural in the daily teaching and learning environment. The Alameda County Office of Education has opened a socio-emotional learning department. So we've been working with them to see how we can connect them with our teachers and our support staff in order for our teachers to also have voice in that way to continue the work. We, in our Teaching, Learning and Educational Equity Department, the staff has been working on preparing training for paraeducators, for our office support staff, for our teachers and specialists and for our parents with attention to the impacts of COVID-19 and what that means for how we need to think about not only teaching in a distance learning format, but also just teaching in a pandemic in general. But there are many things that we need to think about in terms of the preoccupations and concerns that students are going to have as they're embarking on learning and with a lens for racial equity. We've launched our book study on how to be an anti-racist educator and that is just the beginning for us. And we look forward as well to continuing our discussion for our last board meeting on ethnic studies and an expansion of that program. As Dr. Collins mentioned, with some of the funds that are coming into the district, we see it as an opportune time to repurpose those funds in order to bring our science, history, social science and world language curriculum up to speed. It is very, very outdated and our history and social science framework is sorely lacking an anti-bias framework that properly honors the role and contributions of people of color. And so as we work on those committees, those committees will start in the beginning of August and hopefully conclude their work so that we can make an adoption recommendation in October, that they'll be looking also for materials that help them to teach online, e-formats. The students have less textbooks to carry, but do have the appropriate materials as needed. But do have the appropriate materials as needed and will be really hoping for participation from our teachers who teach in specially designed classrooms. And special education programs with a keen lens on that as well as teachers who work in our English language development programs. Next, our special education department has been readily at work thinking about how to support at home learning. We hear you, parents. Many of our parents need more support at home in order for their students to engage with the work in a distance learning format. And so we're looking at how we can prepare our para educators to do some of this support alongside the teacher and what kind of parent training. Will need to roll out alongside these efforts. We want to ensure that we have quality teletherapy services for speech language, for psychology, for occupational therapy, for physical therapy. And so part of that work is happening right now in making sure that we have the technology infrastructure. And the resources in place in order to do that. And our special education department, along with our teaching and learning and educational equity department, have been working with students over the summer. We have extended school year for students with IEPs, and so we're learning from that. Many of our teachers are using the instructional synchronous model that we mentioned earlier. And they're learning how to leverage their time with students and what kinds of supports are needed at home in order to do so. Lastly, our technology and data team has been preparing a take home program for all students and of course staff. We know the staff may be in the classroom where they may also be at home, working in a distance learning model. And so everyone needs to have the right equipment to do their work properly. So we passed out over forty six. Hundred Chromebooks in the spring during emergency distance learning. We did not recollect them from students because we wanted them to continue using them over the summer. To engage in some virtual summer school and also on our blended learning platforms. And will needing need to reassess sort of the device they took home, make sure it's still working, that it's loaded up properly. And get devices to students who don't have them. We have ordered many hotspots through our new funds in order to make sure that students who do not have Wi Fi at home. Can show us their eligibility and we can create a checkout system for them to have a hotspot during the duration of distance learning. So this is really, really key, and we know that this will help bridge some of the digital divide that we were unable to do in the. That divide that we were unable to bridge during the spring. And lastly, we are getting new online platforms, whether it's Schoology that we hope will pass the board review tonight. But also every year we have to reload all our online platforms and make sure they're working. And so the team is busy doing that, making sure that things will be ready for the fall. And that concludes my report on what the educational services division has been up to this summer. And it also concludes our report as an assistant superintendent team. But in summary, our staff is recommending to start the school year in a distance learning model. And we are available at this moment for any comments or questions from the board.
Board members, comments or questions, please raise your actual hands so I can see you. Justy Aguilar.
Yeah, um, Mike and team, thank you so much for putting together the plan and the recommendation. I can't even imagine how many hours you spent at the table discussing and coming to what you presented to us. In a very easy way, I I was very confident in reading everything instead of just blurbing out bullet points. So that was. That was awesome. I I I while I'm in force full support, my main comment is, I think where my mind is. I'm never going to be satisfied with an in person model now. Because the data shows that we, if we were to put our students in the classroom, we would be putting everybody at risk. And risking the lives of our teachers and our students just isn't it for me. So I I I will never be happy with the discussion on in person until we get the data that shows. That things are going to be safe. I I just can't take that risk. Alameda County, I mean, we have some of the highest rates of infection for children in the country. And that just that's so telling. Yeah, and I in response to Alexia, one of the students that spoke during public comment. I agree, and it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough. I I know as a student, I wanted that social interaction. But to everyone else too, we're figuring this out. This is so new territory and we've got to just soldier on, right? And I'm more than confident, more than happy with the leadership that we have in the district, and I know that we'll push through. And then lastly, I think it was interesting Derek Lee's comment on Discord. Because I just so happen to be a nerd too. And I have seen schools use Discord and it's something interesting to look at if that's a possibility. But there may be some privacy issues here and there. Other than that, I'm happy and I'm very satisfied with what we have tonight, and I look forward to further discussion.
Thank you. Justy Perola. Unmute yourself, please.
Okay, I'm getting me such a checky here. I can hardly myself. Anyway, you can hear me now? Good. Okay, what I was going to say was. You know, I've kind of been going back and forth with what I thought we should do here and and to be fair, you probably all did too, but I got over three hundred emails about this topic. And so and I read them all. So. But what I was going to say is that when I was considering back and forth, I was talking to my daughter who has children down in San Luis Obispo in the same situation. And and I said, well, we hadn't decided what we were going to do yet. And she said, well, you know, if we're meeting in person, why would you put the children there? And I thought, well, that's probably the best answer right there is, you know, can't do it, they shouldn't be exposed to it either. So. So anyway, I'm glad we're looking at this. I I know people are not going to be totally happy, but there's no perfect situation. And so thank you for all the work everybody did to get this together and and we'll see what happens. Keep your fingers crossed.
Okay, next, Justy Gonzalez.
Hi, yes, I want to say thank you to the staff because this has been a wild ride of having to put together one plan, then go back and put together a different plan. And then be ready to change at any moment from one plan to the next plan. So I do appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I also appreciate that you have already thought about giving out supplies to students that need them. Because that that is something that we need to be responsible for. I also am very excited to see that there was a plan that included art, music and PE. Because I do think that our students will benefit from having those resources and having those specialists. Providing their energy and expertise to them. The the LCP, you talked about parent input, but I'm assuming there's also going to be staff input and student input, just like the LCAP. Is that correct?
Yes, Justy Gonzalez, the a big part of the staff input is actually. The format for the distance learning and and for how you're reopening. And so. Will likely be able to do that through our. Kind of job embedded time once school starts. But we'll definitely need to think creatively about how to engage our parents. Sort of similarly to how we did in our LCAP Parent Advisory Committee, which is why we wanted to highlight that for those who are watching in the community. Tonight, so that is a big piece. And I just also wanted to say. We did, we are constantly building two plans, right? The when when we get the go ahead that things are completely safe for blended learning. And we just want to say that it is hard for folks to watch us prepare for in person learning, knowing that it's not a right around the corner. And sometimes as we're preparing for it, it makes folks think that like, we think it's imminent, but we still have to prepare. And so those things are kind of happening in a side by side format. So yes, both things are happening at the same time.
Perfect. And then. So the high school, I want to clarify that you're thinking of the same schedule that we ran. Last year, so it will not be a scheduled change from what they typically had, except that it will be online classes instead of. Actually going to the school, but it'll be the six or seven periods a day.
Yes, I could let Dr. Collins speak to that.
Yeah, let me quickly address that. So when we had worked with high school staff in June, that three by three schedule. Seemed to fit a lot of. Check a lot of boxes in terms of needs. One of the biggest ones had to do with limiting the number of students coming back and forth between FTK and the main campus. However, one of the downsides is that it doesn't that that half of the year teachers would not have their required prep. Period. So I I think since then, it's gotten only limited traction and I I think at this point, what we like to look at is just. Reverting to the six period day, especially if it's if it's all distance, the the number of students at this point going back and forth doesn't. Matter so much. But that's something that we want to keep an eye on and how in terms of how we would limit. Student, student, students going back and forth when if and when we do go back to some version of of in person education.
We also talked about engaging with our our high school teachers. We look forward to them returning to school. Right now, there's lots of emailing between groups, but we want to make sure that we can sort of be with the entire team and talk through when school resumes. They are on a block schedule, right? So they could keep that block schedule during distance learning. But that if we do return in person or in a, you know, a small version of in person in terms of blended. You could add more block days if you wanted, but I think that those are things that need to be discussed with the teachers and their consultation. And really looked at and in terms of like student and parent needs and and looked at once we actually get closer to an in person start.
Okay, and then just a couple more questions. We had done the past fail for last semester and the concept was to give students who returned to school who didn't do well. Under the distance learning a chance to recover once they were on the school site. Since we're not going to be returning to the school site, is there still going to be an opportunity for those students to recover the grade?
Yes, so students, the passing complete, yes, so students who have an incomplete still have six weeks upon the official first day of opening school. It's less about a physical opening, but that that school would be open and that you actually have everything you need, right? So that you have the laptop, you have the hotspot, you have attendance that is required, you have a teacher who is required. To spend instructional time with you during the time that you're available, all those things. So with that, that will still stand the six weeks to recruit the grade. And if you're the other question, right, is about, I think a caller had that question about grading, like will grading be back to normal again and the same standards, even though it's distance? And I know, I know that sounds tough, but yeah, it is, you know, that we we will be engaging in standards based instruction as creatively. And as enthusiastically as we can put our San Leandro Unified School District spin on it. We have the staff to do it. They are so creative. But it will be back to normal grading. And so that's why we're not seeing any impacts on grading in that way, because we already have our policies on grading.
Okay, and that was my last question. So you anticipated what I was going to say. And and then I just wanted to highlight those students that were failing, were supposed to have had some. People contacting, connecting with them over the summer to get them so that they were placed to turn that incomplete into a pass. And did that happen?
Yes, so several things happened. One is all those students were outreach in order to join summer school. Or to engage in the TK eight virtual so that they could, if not engage in the kind of project based arts ELA, social science, social studies infused projects that they're doing. At least tune in for tutorial support. We also have staff and the educational services team are called our coordinators repurposed their work towards this effort. And spent the summer contacting and calling in addition to all the hard work that our teachers and counselors did before June fourth as well, right? They left soft as strong as they could and then our our ed services staff picked up. I think that there was a question from a parent on would there be more people to help maybe knock on the door of a student who's not connecting and. Yes, the district has thought about that. We have coordinators that we are purposing for the purpose of sort of truancy in a different way. Of basically putting those routines out in the forefront of school from the first day. Of having systems of knowing who hasn't logged on, checked in on that learning management system so that we can make those calls early on. The teacher being the first point of contact, then having more folks who can be ready to do that work. I don't know yet about home visits because we're still in a very tricky health environment, but we can surely make more contact in other means. And so we are looking at repurposing our central office people towards that direction and the state of California requires us to. It requires us to have a tiered approach and that will be part of our learning continuity and attendance plan that you'll see come before you in August.
Again, thank you for all the work you guys have been doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Justy Tate.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really like how it was. It cross of months amongst the span of all the divisions. Because it truly does affect every area for our students. And Dr. Patel was talking about the accountability piece. So that's really what I wanted to talk about. Is I'm glad that it does have a level of. An accountability at the forefront. I know that during the shelter in place, I was able to spend time with some classrooms. Within San Leandro and outside of San Leandro, different districts. And I I noticed it as well that there was not full participation. And I did not know how it was being enforced. And so that caused concern because you do want to be able to engage with your students on a daily basis. So. The learning continuity and attendance plan will mandate that. And I thank you, Dr. Patel, for stating that. Because that's we still want to continue with learning and instruction. I know that people talk about a loss of learning due to distance distance instruction, but. It does not have to be that way. We can develop the best distance learning plan possible. Not because we necessarily want it to be that way, but at this time we have to have it that way. So I think that our students can thrive despite the fact that they have to. Learn at home. A hundred percent at this time until we're able to resume. So thank you for the presentation and I'm, you know, it makes me feel happy that we can, we won't be able to accommodate and please everyone. But the majority. Would be satisfied at this point until we're able to join, come together. As Diana's daughter said, you know, we don't want to. Sacrifice, we wouldn't put our children in harm's way if we're not meeting in person. And so I'm just really happy that we're looking at it, taking it seriously. And also I want to give a shout out to the healthcare provider parents that were on the call. And they, you know, they're essential workers and I know it's really difficult to be an essential worker and then also. Teach your kids at home. So my heart goes out to the families and I hope that. The community and us, we can resource with other people and really help out the families. Because they really are doing.
You're unmuted. You need to unmute yourself. Justy Tate. Justy Tate, we can't hear you.
Did everything everyone's doing.
That it? Justy Rodriguez?
Thank you. Excuse me. Yeah, so this, there is nothing normal about this. And even a hybrid model with masks and face shields and no touching would not be normal. And that might also have its own psychological impact. But so I'm glad we're starting with distance learning model. I'm also glad that the arts were not forgotten and that we're distributing school supplies. The hotspots are extremely important and working Chromebooks. So thanks, thanks to to all staff for for making sure that that's all happening. It's, there's the equity piece for the susceptibility to the disease and the chances of surviving it. But also with distance learning, there is, there is inequity in in access to some of this stuff. So I'm really glad that that we as a district are providing, providing at least some things that that help with that. So so again, I'm just glad that we're starting with this distance learning model and thanks staffing cabinet for that. That's all.
Thank you. Trusty Sheridan.
Thank you, President Oshinsky. Well, going last, I'm not going to go back and recap everything that the other trustees have said. I do want to thank the staff for the responsible recommendation. Orange County, I don't know where they're at, but that recommendation to continue with school in person without masks and without socialization. and without socialization, without social distancing, it just doesn't seem responsible. I know that we're facing an upcoming PPE shortage with the surge in cases, with school, some schools across the country starting to return. I know that I'm getting warnings because in our occupation and some of the chemicals people use, they use PPE and it's just not available for them, and they don't expect it to be until January, February. It's also important to note that four hundred and ninety-two new cases in Alameda County yesterday. Another staggering fact, despite what the president or Governor DeSantis in Florida, you know, they, they have their heads buried in the sand. It took us ninety-nine days to reach one million cases, forty-three days for the next million, twenty-eight days for the third million. Today, we sit at three point four nine million. We're on pace to hit the next million in thirteen days. It's this, this thing is growing exponentially and is not going away. So we need to be prepared to plan for the long haul, to continue to make these responsible decisions. But also I'm excited to see, knowing the capability and caliber of our staff and cabinet, that our past investments in technology, in the leadership, when we brought Dr. McLaughlin in and he said, we need to go one-to-one on devices, bringing in fiber optics, one, you know, one-to-one on the, what do we put in the classrooms? Those giant LCD.
Promethean boards.
The Promethean boards, you know, just everything that we've done in technology, I'm excited to see. You know, I know some of the things we have on the agenda today. I'm excited to see what we can do and how we can build this robust distance learning program and again, be leaders in the Bay Area like we have in so many other areas. We, we know what they are. We don't need to tout those accolades, but we need to continue to be the leaders that we know we can be and put to work the technology and our leadership that our, our city has invested in. And they've supported us time after time with these bonds, and we're investing in our technology for our kids, and it's time to put it to work. So I'm excited to see what comes of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justy. And next, our fearless leader, Dr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I want to thank the staff. I don't think it's, it's really hard to explain to the general public of what we've tried to deal with for the last three months or more. It's, we started out with just wanting to close school for a couple of weeks, hoping we would all be returning. And then it was going to be a month, and then we'd all be returning. And then next you know, we're talking about closing the school year. All those decisions were made without any guidance from the state or from our counties or from, of course, our President of the United States. So we have spent daily and sometimes hourly on many, many meetings with getting information that's conflicting or inconsistent, coming from either the state or coming from the health department. So I want to thank my cabinet who has stuck through, you know, we would work hard and especially them. They would be hammering away to come up with a solution and then boom, change. And we'd have to readjust. Okay? And I also want to put a shout out to my, my colleagues, the superintendents throughout the state of California especially because we have been on calls, numerous calls weekly, and we feel like we're spinning because we're waiting for guidance. We're waiting for some structure. And really, when the guidance comes out, it actually creates more, more questions. So the educators know what to do, but we need some guidance from health because a lot of the science that comes out is conflicting with other people's science. So, you know, trustee Sheridan is correct. This thing is increasing. And, and our number one job right now, and I've asked this question, I've said it on these board meetings before. I've asked the health officials and the state officials, what is our role? Are we to educate? Are we to keep, slow down COVID and keep people safe? Are we to open the economy? And if we're supposed to do all three, it's not going to happen. Okay? So we are doing the best we can because our number one job is to educate. We're educators. We, we want in-person teaching. We want to look at those little guys on the carpet, teach them how to read, you know, and see the smiling faces and the socio-emotional. That's what we signed up for, you know? But we are also responsible for the, for the, the safety of all our students and our staff. So we have to look at the, the big picture. And I know the, I feel bad for the parents and the parents have got to work. And, you know, it is, it is a, it's a heavy lift, and it's a heavy lift in the McLaughlin household as well, you know? Because we have kids and trying to work and trying to teach and do this, it's tough. So parents hang in there with us, staff hang in there. We are, we are here to listen. We will work in partnership with our teachers and our parents to whatever we need to do to provide services and support through either distance learning or when we can open, we are prepared. And this staff has been working hard to try to solve every problem that, that has been coming our way. I can tell you that guess what, we could get another recommendation in three days from the governor. Okay, these questions were asked to him on, on the news conference the other day, and he just circled around answering the question. How can you demand that you have to close down indoor activities, but yet you're still not giving any direction on whether or not we should open schools or close schools? And there was still not an answer on that. And that's the question we have asked every time we have a meeting with the Alameda Health officials, when we're on the phone with state officials, give us an answer. And it just keeps circling around. So we want people safe. We want people healthy. We want our teachers to all be healthy and all our other staff. We got, it's not just our teachers, our custodians, our, our support staff in, in, in the business office. That, you know, we work in small environments. They're working today without air conditioning because it broke. You know, you have some dedicated people that want to keep this district going in the right direction that we were heading. And we hear all the concerns that came from the parents tonight and all the concerns from the teachers, and we will address all those. We will be working on some avenues, either, either on Parents Square or on a website or both to continually gather information from our, our stakeholders so we can answer their questions. Because I know there's a lot of hands up because you see a presentation like that, you want, you want, you have a question, you want it answered. So be assured that coming soon, we will have that avenue for you because we do not want you sitting at home going, when am I going to get my question answered? Okay, so hang in there. Support your family at home and be safe. And let's try to get this thing knocked out. I'm, I'm ready to come back in person and see these kids again. So I'm hoping we can get this thing done and get moving on. But again, thanks to the staff. This staff is ready to rock with anything that gets thrown at them. So with that, I'll pass it back to Dr. Peter Oshinsky. You want to be a doctor?
Sure. I just want to thank you, Sanel, and your team for putting this presentation together. Obviously, it's a difficult task, given that there's no precedent for this and no one has experience in this. And so you're kind of going along as you do. I appreciate that. I appreciate you listening to the community, taking a second survey to get a finger on the pulse of the community and where they stand because things changed. As Justy Sheridan said, when we closed schools, there was only two hundred and some cases per day, and now we're at four hundred and some cases per day. This is definitely not the time to go back to in-person. I appreciate you personally for listening to our community tonight when they spoke. I was wondering when they're asking their questions, how those would be answered, and you answered them immediately, and I appreciate that very much. I appreciate the leadership in the district. I think they're amazing, and I think they'll get us through this. And I thank my fellow board members as well, too. I'm so proud to be on this board. We're a very cohesive group where we have our differences, but we're very like-minded and we can get the job done. So thank you to all of you. All right, next, I need a motion.
I move to approve, and this is N4A, correct?
We need a motion on, just, trustee Sheridan?
I'm, I'd like to introduce a substitute motion on distance, on beginning the year with distance learning and adopting the other programs to slowly integrate at a safe time.
Absolutely. And then don't we also need to add to that the change to the student calendar? Okay.
That's pending negotiations still.
Pending negotiations, okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion move by trustee Sheridan, seconded by trustee Perola. Please vote all, I'm sorry, any discussion, any more discussion? Okay, all is in favor, raised your hand, aye. Motion carries seven, zero.